Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the January 14th Pulaski County School Board Meeting. It is good to see such a big crowd with the cold weather out there, so thank you for coming. And if you would, join me in a moment of silence as we reflect and remember and thank and pray for those that are dealing with the horrible wildfires in California. Thank you. If you would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Our first order of business tonight is the reorganization of the school board. And before we start that process, I would just like to say thank you to our board members for a wonderful year. We've had many, many positives, some challenges definitely that we've had to work through, but your commitment and dedication for this year and what we've brought to Pulaski County is certainly wonderful and fantastic, and we appreciate everything and the time that you're putting into this as well. And sort of as a special thank you to Mr. Taylor, who served as Chair this year. I want to say sorry and thank you.
I will miss those midnight phone calls, Rob.
Well, that's what I was going to apologize for, all the phone calls, whether they're at 6:00 a.m. or 11:00 p.m.
I don't think there's a day that I didn't speak to you.
I agree with that. And I also want to thank you for the 6:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. phone calls, too.
It's truly a pleasure.
We appreciate, and seriously, Josh, we appreciate your leadership and the dedication that you've -- it's a lot of time, and you've done a heck of a job with it. So, having said that, I will entertain nominations for the school board chair for the next school year.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Gina Payne for chairwoman of the Pulaski County School Board for '25-'26.
All right, we have a nomination of Ms. Payne for chairwoman of the school board for the remainder of this year and part of next.
I would like to second that motion.
And we have a second? Do we have any other nominations? Do we have any discussion? All right, all those in favor of Ms. Payne being the chair for this rest of this year and the first part of next year, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes, and I'm gonna hand you the gavel. Thank goodness. You can vote on that a little later in the agenda, too.
I'm gonna get myself back together here. As we continue on with our reorganization, I do want to say thank you to this board for your faith you're placing in me to chair this for the next year. For the record, if you use the term chairman, I don't get upset. It is a proper term, chair. You don't need to put the woman on it. I'm not gonna get upset if it's missed. That being said, we will continue on to the election of the vice chair position. At this time, I will seek nominations for vice chair.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to move to nominate Ms. Cox for the vice chair.
All right, we have a nomination of Ms. Sabrina Cox. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Any discussion be had? With that, I move that we receive Ms. Sabrina Cox as vice chair of the Pulaski County School Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Appointment of the clerk of the Pulaski County School Board. I'm looking for a motion to continue with having Ms. Tree support or service as the Pulaski County School Board clerk.
Gina, I will make the motion to continue having Ms. Porter be the clerk of the school board.
I'll second that.
Ms. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Porter, for continuing to serve. The deputy clerk of Pulaski County School Board, at this time, I will -- I'm looking for a motion to appoint Mrs. Brenda Crawford to continue on as the school board deputy clerk.
I'll make that motion, Mrs. Chairwoman.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
I appreciate you all selecting him because they do a heck of a job. Thank you.
They do, and they have a handle on keeping us moving along very smoothly.
They really do.
The appointment of the parliamentarian. Looking for a motion to continue on with our superintendent, Mr. Robert Graham, to act as the parliamentarian over our meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you. Our Virginia School Board Association agent, they serve as our delegate in matters of legislative affairs. This has been the position held by Ms. Cox for this last year. I will entertain other suggestions from the board who would like to serve in this position.
I'll make the motion that Ms. Cox continue her representation of Pulaski County School Board for the V S B A.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Ms. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Sure.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Virginia School Board Association Deputy Agent, which has been a position I have filled as the number two, in case Mrs. Cox can't make the meetings. I will entertain a motion at this time for the deputy agent of Virginia School Board Association.
You know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I'll make that motion to keep Gina Payne as the secondary agent.
I'll second that.
Ms. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Our representative for the Southwest Virginia Governor's School Governing Board, I am looking for a motion. I am willing to continue on in that position representing our school division, if I can have a motion reappointing me to that position.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think it's worth mentioning Gina is actually the chair of that board as well, newly elected.
So I have to stay.
Yes, I have to stay.
Okay, appointment to our school security committee. I know the recommendation on this does indicate having the school board chair and vice chair on this. For the last year, Mr. Williams and Mr. Price have been our representatives on that school security committee. Therefore, as Mr. Taylor said, if it's broke, don't fix it. I think they have a good handle on those matters taking place before the school committee, security committee. So I'm looking for a motion that would continue on with Mr. Billy Williams, Mr. Jacob Price, as our representatives on the school security committee.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
And before we vote on it, there's one name missing. It's Stu Nelson, who's our head of our S R Os. He serves on that as well.
And I see a name here that I'm not so sure is still with us, too, Sue.
Yep.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes, we'll take that off. We also are missing Ms. Bowling and Ms. Blevins.
We need to add them all on there.
Yes.
Okay, the two representatives by motion from our school board would be Mr. Williams and Mr. Price. So the other names to serve on this committee are Dr. Sarah Polcha, Dr. Tara Grant, Jess Shul, Mary Sheverton, Todd Saunders, Supervisor Mike Mooney, Anthony Byers, Brian Ward, and we added Sue Nelson.
Stu Nelson, Ms. Bowling, and Ms. Blevins.
Ms. Bowling and Ms. Blevins. Do I have a motion that we accept that full team as our school security committee?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Mrs. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Moving on through seating order, as part of our reorganization, I'd be looking for a motion that we maintain the seating order just like we have it right now.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
And seamlessly, we'll move to voting order. I'm looking for a motion to voting order, be just like the seating order.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mrs. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
All right, date, time, and place for our regular board meetings. There is a list that has been provided to us of each date. Generally, it's the second Tuesday of every month, to be held at 6:00 p.m. here at this school board office. Looking for a motion that the school board meetings continue to be held the second Tuesday of the month at 6:00 p.m. at this very meeting place unless otherwise noted.
Madam Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Mrs. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Our school board attorney, I'm looking for a motion that would continue to retain the firm of Sands, Anderson, and Timberlake Smith to be our legal representation for the school board.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mrs. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Appointment of superintendent designee. This would be a motion to approve and appoint Dr. Tara Grant, Assistant Superintendent of Administration Instruction, Dr. Sarah Polcha, the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Mrs. Morgan Sklar, Director of Finance, and Mr. Lincoln Whitaker, Technology Director, as authorized superintendent designees to sign all Virginia Department of Education reports.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
All right, so all of our reorganizations done.
Great job.
Thank you.
Perfect.
It only gets easier from here.
That's right.
Right, and we thank you all for being patient with that minor housekeeping process. We'll be moving on now to what you'll recognize as a normal school board meeting. At this time, I'll hand over to you for our recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first recognition, we'd like to invite Ms. Frances Byers' family to the front, please. And I guess you all can head on down. Tonight, we are honored to have the family of Frances Byers with us. Pulaski County Public Schools would like to take a moment and honor Frances Byers for her dedication to our school system. Frances was an avid supporter of the school system, constantly out in the community, working to obtain donations for the students in our district. And I'm gonna add on some to that. I thought a lot about Frances and how she came to me when I first became superintendent and was one of the first community members to come in and welcome me. I kind of just thought about nicknames for her, to be real honest with you, because she is here and then gone. So I thought maybe Magic Man, because now you see me, now you don't. And she was just, she has as much energy, I think, as Ms. Bowling and Ms. Blevins, and they all make a great team in helping the children in Pulaski County. She was a huge advocate for our students, for the middle and high school, and she was always busy doing something. I can tell you, for me personally, it was a blessing to know her. She made me five cakes. I've only been here a year and a half, and she made me five cakes. And they weren't little cakes either. They were blueberry and strawberry and blueberry, and I think a carrot cake, and a red velvet cake, and there was another cake. It was a lot of cakes. And I loved her to death. I ate them all. Well, we ate them. We all ate them all. I mean, they were, and my girls ate a lot of them, too. So she was, she's exactly the type of role model that we want for our community to have, and we were, again, blessed to know her, and our children are better because of her. So we appreciate everything she has done and everything that you all mean to us as a school system, too. So thank you for coming this evening, and again, we will remember her forever.
I just want to thank you all for honoring her and for allowing her to do what she loved and what she felt she was called to do. It was her passion, and she loves you all. And I know that many of you here, and if I spoke at her service, was on her daily list to call and text. And I love that y'all love Ms. Davis.
Mr. Graham, you are special, but I also got cakes. This Frances Byers has chopped in my driveway and locked the door with eight big cakes. She supported me as I ran for school board, prayed for this board as a whole, and no one remembered her as a supporter of us. And she continued that by sitting right here after we were murdered. And I'm gonna send her out there, and I'm gonna send her coming to my doors. But we will always remember how special she was, and that she must be as well.
I'm still not sure how she had so much time on her to do everything that she did because I know she made our culture cakes, she made the bowling cakes, she made the Blevins cakes.
She took meals places, and they give her lots of money.
Oh, yeah.
And she did that every day.
Yes, yes, and the amount of money that she raised this year was over $10,000, which is amazing for one person to do for our children.
It's gonna take a whole team of people.
She made a gift. I don't. I said I look like her, but I can't get up and go post people and ask them for money. But she could. But she'd take them and cake first.
Maybe that's how she gets so much.
She could have drank.
Well, we're gonna continue to honor her, and we met last month with Pulaski County Education Foundation, and we have a general fund just for her. So all the donations that come in will continue to come in through her, and we will share those with Ms. Bowling and Ms. Blevins at Christmas time, so the children will still have her with them.
We need some type of list of the people that donated, I think, she's out. Because we need to see some kind of card.
Sure, sure, we can get that.
Can I get you a little picture here? Maybe you can, or about that?
Okay.
There we go. One, two. Thank you.
Thank you all.
I'd love to have a phone call at 7:15 in the morning.
Pulaski County Public Schools and Pulaski County High School are pleased to announce our employee of the month, Lynn McVeigh. Ms. McVeigh serves as custodian at Pulaski County High School. Ms. McVeigh is dedicated to keeping our school building spotless and welcoming. She approaches every task with a smile, handling her responsibilities quickly and efficiently. Beyond her official duties, Ms. McVeigh takes it upon herself to ensure everyone feels special by giving out birthday cards, a thoughtful gesture that highlights her kindness and care. She is truly a treasure and an irreplaceable member of the Pulaski County High School family.
Do you have any family members with you tonight?
I have a family member, but she has a pop.
Pulaski County Public Schools and Pulaski County High School are pleased to announce our teacher of the month, Tekeisha McCroskey. Ms. McCroskey teaches English at Pulaski County High School. Ms. McCroskey puts a tireless effort to create thoughtful lesson plans and to ensure the well-being of everyone around her, including her students and coworkers. As the sponsor of the National Honor Society, she dedicates herself to organizing their events with great care. Furthermore, she is nearly always available to tutor and readily takes on four blocks when needed. Ms. McCroskey is the first person to volunteer when anything is needed, and her enthusiasm is contagious. Her contributions make her an invaluable member of Pulaski County High School. Congratulations.
I just noticed that with that comes a certificate from the Pulaski Y M C A.
Oh, yes.
And you have two options.
Yes, you have, absolutely.
Pulaski County Public Schools and Pulaski County High School are pleased to announce our January Senior of the Month, Carter James Smith. Carter's nominating teacher describes him as a prime example of a student who has fully committed to the early childhood education program throughout his high school years. Not only is he a strong academic performer in his coursework, but he has also consistently volunteered to help in various ways. In the early childhood program, students often take on multiple roles, and Carter does so without hesitation. It's amusing to think back to when he first joined us, eager to become a lawyer, but now he has chosen the path of a teacher, fully aware of the challenges, both good and bad, that come with the profession. It's the kind of determination and passion that Carter exhibits, which is essential for becoming a great teacher. His dedication is exactly what our school system needs. Currently, Carter is an intern in the program, and he will continue his valuable contributions next semester as a paid intern. Wow, congratulations. We feel it is a privilege to help nurture and grow teachers like Carter, who are committed to giving back and staying in our community. By the way, when you graduate, you're hired. Upon graduation, Carter plans to attend Raffey University with plans to return to Pulaski County Public Schools. There it is. Let me read it. Let me read. "With plans to return to Pulaski County Schools to teach at the elementary level or with the P C H S preschool program." Those kids would absolutely love you. During his free time, Carter enjoys going to church, playing video games, and spending time with his friends and family. Congratulations, Carter.
I was gonna say.
that right.
Go ahead.
Good. And the Rotary Club for Pulaski, in Pulaski, for their sponsorship of McKenna Stewart and Rice Washington at the Rotary Youth Leadership Conference. If you guys will come up, and we'll let Mr. Schwarzer give us an idea of what you are, what the recognition is actually for, if you don't mind.
I'm all.
Okay, that'd be great.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
So why don't you give us an idea of what they earn here?
The Rotary Club of Pulaski has been in business for over 100 years, one of the earliest Rotary Clubs, and we're pleased and proud that Rotary International has added an avenue of service, youth service, recognizing that that's part of the mission of Rotary International. These young people were selected through their school to go for a weekend, not of fun and frivolity, but rather for some serious leadership development time. And oh, yes, there was some fun and frivolity in the course of the weekend. We tell that our nearby institution down the road, teasingly called our community college, it happens to be Virginia Tech. They had sessions, they worked on group and team leadership, they did have some good eating at the end at Virginia Tech, and I think most important of all, they had some connections with the and I think most important of all, they had some connections with other young people up and down the New River Valley, up and on into all the way into West Virginia, all the way down into Tennessee. And so, for the selection process that our school provided, thank you. And Mr. Graham, thank you for your cooperation in getting the whole award. We appreciate it very much. Well done. McKenna, it was a pleasure meeting you again, you in this process. Likewise, good luck for you as your future. And get just a little bit older, there's a home in Rotary for you too.
All right, continuing on, this is our favorite part of the meeting where our student representative from the high school comes to give us an update. Jeremiah.
Mrs. Chair, Mr. Graham, Board, good evening.
Good evening.
So tonight, I want to spread awareness that we're having a Night to Shine event in February, I think it's February 7th, at New Hope Church. It's for kids who have special needs, it's kind of like their prom night or their Valentine dance for them. And so, we'd like to have people there to volunteer, to help out, and just to have a great night there because it's really, it's really something special to see those kids have the same opportunity as other kids have and be able to enjoy a night all to themselves where everything's about them. And what I'd like to bring to you is, everyone knows in our county that our CTE program at the high school is one of the best CTE programs we have to offer. And just how we, like just how kids bus over from different counties to the New River Community College for Governor's School, I would like to see if other schools can go, bus over to the high school to join our CTE program because not everyone has the same exact CTE programs or CTE classes that we have to offer.
Jeremiah, I think that's a great idea. Actually, Mr. Graham and I talked about maybe some opportunities to collaborate with some surrounding counties and some areas that maybe we didn't have some dual opportunities with. So might be some good partnerships that we can make with other counties.
I love that idea. I mean, we had, so Dr. Sears and I, when I was in Radford and he was here, we, before COVID, we looked at trying to partner. We had machining and engineering and automotive and cosmetology was, and Radford didn't have that. So we looked at that, but then COVID hit. So I love the idea and I appreciate you bringing that up, Jeremiah. So I think we can definitely look.
Something could be done.
And reach out.
Also, it'll be great for our students and other students across the, our district to have a great opportunity to be in that.
And you're right, it's a wonderful CTE program and it'd be really nice to have people take advantage of it outside of Pulaski County.
Same. That's a great idea.
So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
At one, you had, the FCA had an event that had to be postponed this past Sunday, has it been rescheduled?
I have not heard anything about it being rescheduled. I would love for it to be this Sunday night, but I don't know if, I haven't heard anything about it, actually, so.
Well, I'm sure they're very good about getting it out via social media, so.
We may have to wait for all the weather to clear first.
Yeah, that is, that's exactly right.
But I love to brag.
Hold your tongue, Jess.
Yeah, that's right. Love to brag on Jeremiah too and just want to let everybody know that he was one of the seniors that was selected to be a candidate for the Most Valuable Cougar.
Yes.
He had that not too long ago and congratulations on that, Jeremiah. Certainly well-earned.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, not much longer. Graduation's coming.
I don't know, four months. It's hard to believe, actually.
Exactly. Well, good luck.
Will you still come back and talk to us when you graduate?
Of course, of course.
Or handpick your successor.
Are y'all gonna have a reorg meeting?
Well, trust me, you'll find the next, help find the next representative that comes before us, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jeremiah.
Thank you.
All right, public comments. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding Pulaski County Public Schools. The school board at this meeting will take no action. Items presented by citizens may be referred to the superintendent for research who may report back to the school board at a subsequent meeting or through other communication. At this time, we do allow three minutes per person to speak. So if you wish to comment about matters not involving individual employees or their performance, you're able to present your comments now. If you do have a matter that you want to discuss about employees, we ask you to first present them to the superintendent. If there's anyone who wants to take advantage of the time to publicly speak, please come up, give us your name.
Hi, good evening, Board. I'm Erica Segal Perry. I'm the School Program Manager and I just wanted to take a moment to introduce our new pediatric dentist, Dr. Eleanor Savak. And if she could just tell a little bit about herself, she will be serving Pulaski County Public Schools.
Come on up.
Hi, everyone, nice to meet you. I'm Eleanor Savak. I'm a pediatric dentist and I'm really happy to be serving this community and hope to help a lot of children in the Pulaski County Schools. There's a lot of kids that need treatment and with our team, we'll be happy to meet that need.
We have a lot of, a lot of needs, so welcome and thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
If I may ask you a question, I know you'll be able to provide your services through the school-based health clinic, but you'll also be working out of the main offices, Community Health Centers. For anybody who may not be aware of what services you, you bring in now that may have been lacking or needed, do you mind elaborating a little bit more?
Sure. So comprehensive dental treatment for children under 18, so zero to 18, extractions, crowns, full mouth treatment, and we're working on getting privileges with the Carillion New River Valley location in Radford so that we could treat children under general anesthesia as needed, which is most important for patients with special needs or younger children especially.
Great. I know there's a big vacuum of the availability of dental treatment for two minors in our area and it seems to be getting worse, so that's why, that's why I asked you to. It'll go beyond just fluoride treatments and exams. We can, we can get down into doing some serious work with the kids.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else who wishes to speak at this time? All right, there'll be another opportunity at the end. Thank you. Okay, getting into the business tonight. Everybody's had the opportunity to look over the minutes from last month's meeting as well as our December 3rd special call-up meeting. I'm looking to have a motion to approve the minutes from both of those meetings, December 3rd and December 10th.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Porter.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Thank you. Everybody on the board's had an opportunity to look over tonight's agenda. If nobody has any objections or wants to make any changes, I would like a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
On the consent agenda involving payment of bills, our personnel matters, and approving these two matters, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I'll make that motion, Ms. Chairwoman.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Porter.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
We have quite a few informational items tonight. First one up is the FFA Drive Your Tractor to School. Okay, Mrs. Bowling.
Ms. Kalar, you can't do that.
Good evening, Mr. Graham and school board members. My name is Emma Tickle and I am a senior at Pulaski County High School and I am the student advisor for our school's Future Farmers of America.
I'm Carly Hamblin. I'm a junior at Pulaski County High School and I'm our FFA Vice President.
Taylor Dillon, agriculture educator at Pulaski County Middle School and also the Pulaski County FFA advisor.
We are here tonight requesting approval from Pulaski County School Board for the first Drive Your Tractor to School Day in Pulaski County. This event is planned to be on National Agriculture Day, which is Tuesday, March 18th, 2025, from 8:45 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. And the starting point is planned to be at Randolph Park. Currently, the FFA officers, volunteer parents, and agriculture teachers are planning the outline of the day to incorporate the safety aspects in agriculture equipment, along with the fun part of driving our tractors to school. Students will be able to see the tractors with attachments on display. We will discuss and share the importance of safety when passing farm equipment on the road as well. We will have test dummy demonstrations with farm equipment performed by confirmed guest, confirmed guest sales representative from Boone Tractor, Brad Fontaine. We have a guest speaker confirmed for the event who is a third-generation farmer and he will be sharing the story of With County Farmer Ricky Crigger who passed away in a tractor accident in 2022. The FFA team has been in contact with several businesses in the community for support, not necessarily for money, but presence to show commitment to not just local schools, not just the local school's agriculture program, but to safe, safety to protect those working in agriculture. Locals, local offices for State Farm, Deanie Hall, and Farm Bureau, Faith Bentley, have been contacted to not only attend, but, but the request has been made to provide statistics of farm-related accidents at a local, state, and national level, to provide any information to benefit students with knowledge to protect farmers on the road and in the fields. Tractor Supply has been contacted as well and have committed to support in attendance and the logistics of the day. They are also committing to driving tractors with the students the day of the event. Manager Katrina Jackson and Randy Warden have committed to do this. I'm almost done. Interstate Construction has been contacted and committed to support the events of the day by attending and helping. They are also committed to providing dump truck and trailer displays. R&amp;L Farms and/or Williams Meat Processing and Withville have committed to provide equipment for display and riding with students. Boone Tractor has committed to support in not only attendance, but will also provide equipment for display and join students in the ride to school. We have requested all supporters to please bring a banner with their name on it so we can proudly display to show those who support not only National Ag Day, but the Pulaski County High School FFA team. Students, local farmers, FFA alumni, and even Pulaski County High School staff and administrators will be invited to drive a tractor as well. We have approval from Assistant County Administrator, Administrator Anthony Akers to use Randolph Park as the meeting place. We have approval from Sheriff Mike Whirl for a police escort from Randolph Park to the high school in the morning, then a police escort from the high school back to Randolph Park at the end of the event. I have a rough draft which should be on y'all's desk. Oh, sorry. I want to thank each of you in advance for your time and consideration for this request. Our FFA would greatly appreciate this approval, support, and commitment from our school board. Thank you so much. Are there any questions? March 18th.
Great job, guys. Seems very comprehensive. How many tractors are we talking about here?
As many as possible.
Okay.
As many as possible.
Where will they be displayed at the high school once you get there? Like what area of the campus?
I'm pretty sure the football field was discussed.
Ooh.
On the track.
The track, track.
Okay.
On the track.
Yes, on the track, yes, on the track, but in the football stadium.
We have 21 acres. You guys can put those tractors just about anywhere.
You answered just about every question I was gonna have. You've already talked to the sheriff, he's gonna have an escort, you're gonna start at Randolph. I assume, you know, the high school's good with this and.
Well, it sounds like you guys have really been thorough in your thought process and checking around. That's, that's, congratulations on just being.
Good job.
Very understanding of what you needed to do to come before us and present all of the information and whatever you do, do not get in a tractor with Katrina Jackson. Don't do it. And I'd love to ride with somebody. I'm not gonna drive, but I'll ride with somebody.
Is that all the questions?
I suppose so. This is, I mean, this is not something, Mr. Graham, that requires us to vote on it, no.
No, ma'am. No, we just wanted to make, I mean, it's such a, they've done such a nice job of organizing it and we just wanted you to make, make aware and hopefully you can come.
Well, it sounds good. I remember talking to him, I don't know if it's your father.
Yes, it was.
Okay, I remember talking to him about this back in November. And so, I'm glad to see it come to pass.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, Mr. Graham, attendance and discipline data.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, I was really pleased with these documents this time because December's a tough month for us with, you know, the cold and missing school because of various things, illness, those types of things. And our attendance stayed, actually improved from last month. Still working with the high school and middle school to try to get up to 94%. And then you can see down here in chronic absenteeism, we were much better this year than last year at this time, which is very exciting for us and that's why we're seeing our percentages of attendance improve in December. So excited about that. And then behaviors too, again, during the month of December with being in and out of school so much, you would think that behaviors would go up, but you can see there that they have not. On a couple, they did, but mostly they've declined from previous years too. So we're very excited about, our administrators, our teachers, our staff continue to build wonderful relationships with our students and therefore that really helps in managing behaviors. And I think the high expectations that you all as a board have made and Mr. Williams' ideas to, you know, look at last year's data compared to this year's data really, really helps and shows that we're moving in the right direction. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
It's overall a roughly 23% decline from this period last year to now, meaning behaviors, we're not having as many incidents, which is a huge step in the right direction.
And I think if you would ask our staff too and our principals, they would say the same thing too.
Yeah. Great. Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Graham?
No, good work.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to an update here on Northwood, about the roof there.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Graham, just a quick information item, just to let you guys know that we had the roof bid for Northwood come in. As you can see, we had five bids, which is a good turnout. I think five's a pretty solid number. We got a good quality bid from S.G. Young Contracting as the low bid at 214.5. So my recommendation is we move forward with it. It's not something we have to move to an action item and vote on, but it's just more or less an informational item. To let you guys see what the bids were, well under budget, 280, I think is what I was carrying exactly for the roof. This includes the replacement of the flat roof section completely, the gutter emphysema and the repair of the A-frame slate roof.
Okay.
So if there are any questions or comments about it, I'd be glad.
Why do you anticipate such a large difference between the low bid and the high bid?
Well, I mean, there's any number of reasons I could give, but that's kind of a common, that's a common spread. That's not a spread that I'd be too terribly concerned about.
I just want to make sure that you're comfortable taking the low bid.
Yeah, S.G. Young is a reputable contractor. They are the contractor that replaced the roofs at both Kreiser and Snowville.
Fantastic.
So we've had a relationship with them in the past and they've performed very, very good, so.
Okay, great.
And all their responses were in line.
Great.
Great, thank you. Are we on track? Does it still look like to be able to get up, move everything here up there by summer?
Folks are very concerned about, about Northwood. They really are.
Well, I, I don't know. I don't know yet. I expect the full engineering documents for the interior remodel by the end of next week. I had a preliminary floor plan produced by ZMM last week and I gave it to Brenda and Rob. Brenda has a copy of it. We're gonna pursue that under a Gordian contract, which is a state contract first, to see if it's possible to get it done under that. If they're not busy and, you know, if things fall in line, I don't know that the fiber will be there by then. Yeah, so I don't expect, I really don't anticipate a July 1. I just don't. I think realistically, we're probably looking at, a more realistic deadline would be Christmas the next year and then let's see how things go. The roofing bid, we gave them, you. The roofing bid, we gave them, you can start anytime the weather allows. Looking at January, we're not gonna be able to do any work on that roof in January. If February breaks and we catch, you know, a couple weeks of, you know, 50-degree weather, then maybe we could get it knocked out in February and get ahead, but that's kind of a weather permitting kind of thing. So just gonna have to see how it plays out, but it's moving forward. And I think we're gonna be, you know, no later than Christmas next year, but hopefully July, that's what we're gunning for.
It's not about the roof, but...
Christmas this year.
Christmas next, yeah. Well, this year, now that we're in 2025.
I'm just saying, no, town party's 2020.
Yeah, Christmas, Christmas of 2025.
Just, so they replacing the whole roof? They're just...
They're replacing the, know anything about Northwood? It's got an A-frame slate roof. That roof is staying. The two flat roofs over the cafeteria, which will be the new boardroom, the old kitchen, which will be a storage and break room, it's getting fully replaced. And there's a flat roof over the second classroom wing. You're looking directly at it, A-frame comes down, there was an addition years, years, years ago, and it has a flat roof on it. That's completely replaced. A-frame slate's in pretty good shape. We don't have any leaks in it, but we're going ahead and replacing all the copper flashing and any damaged slate shingles that are on the roof, we're having them replaced. And if you can keep a slate roof, I recommend you keep it. It's a, it's a quality roof.
Yeah. This is not about the roof, but what's the lead time on the fiber to the property?
Right now, they're trying to decide if they're gonna climb on AD poles in French. I'm waiting to hear back, but I told them that our date kinda juiced it a little bit. I had to have it by June 1.
Yeah, yeah.
And they have radio silence.
Okay. Typical, typical. Cool. Thanks, Jess.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
All right. Mr. Graham, bring us up to date on the agreement with Community Health Center.
We have the agreement here for the Community Health Center and you met the new pediatric dentist, and thank you again for being here with us. This is the agreement, and I have shared this with Michelle and Erica, and they have it, but they're not doing anything with it until you all decide to do something with it too. They, once, once we finalize what we would like to have, if, if this is it, we will share it with them, and they're here to answer questions if you have questions, but we will share it with them, and they will take it to their legal team, is I think what Ms. Bronze told me, she would take it to her legal team, and then we can go ahead and finish it. So I think the floor is open for discussion. You all have had this for a little while. So they're here to answer questions. I'll do my best to try to help to answer questions, but we do need to move forward at some point.
I know. I took some time, we were all kind of, we got this right before the Christmas break, so if anybody was like me, I really didn't get to dig into it until the last few days. I think it's, we have a great structural start here with what our, our legal counsel has put together. And I know, I mean, there's, there's a couple areas I still have some questions about, but I think it might behoove us as a board, again, to consult with our legal counsel on some areas, you know, to maybe elaborate more on what we may want to pull, what we may want to explain a little bit more.
Okay.
So, I mean, if the board's in agreement with that, that's something you and I could maybe get arranged.
Sure.
And do. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
I don't have an issue or question about that. I just think we've been chewing this for a long time. I'm ready to get past the decisions we need to make and get the health center what they need to do to be able to treat our students.
Right. Well, I understand, I understand that. I think they're continuing to treat.
They are treating the students.
They are. Yes, of course.
But I agree. I think the, the hangup has been on, on our end of it in terms of getting this rough draft back.
From counsel.
From counsel, so. Nobody more than me wants to get this one tucked away and, and dealt with, so.
When, we appreciate you all allowing us to, to use the current agreement that we have and to continue because we are, even Erica asking, I didn't allow her to do this, but the, one of the days that we were out, we had some families who needed some support, but we were out of school, so. But they do a fantastic job of, of providing for those, our families that need it. And every time I go up there, even, I can't, it was like last week, I believe, I was there too. There were a young student getting her teeth cleaned, he or her getting her teeth cleaned, and Erica was about to see another student too. So it's well worth, it's weight in gold, I think. They do a great job. So we can, we can, you all just let me know what you would like me to send back to Rodney.
Do you think that Rodney can get that just turned around and before the next meeting?
Yeah. And then we'd give it to them, and you all can look at it too.
Okay. But yes, now I'm all for, let's, you know, momentum's going, let's, let's get this taken care of and executed.
Sounds good.
Very good. Okay. Well, you, you, I had that question today, and I appreciate the immediate turnaround of that information, absolutely, and I appreciate that. And so, yeah, if I have more, they'll come, and I appreciate your, your responding so quickly. Okay. The new Virginia Department of Education accountability information.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and this is about as clear as mud, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna confuse you and Sarah jump in here if, if you can. Let me see if... So this spring, when we take our SOLs, this is the format that our school division will follow as far as accountability for the fall of 2025. And you can look, if you go on the Department of Education, there, there's a, a wealth of, of information on there, and you can see that the categories are no longer what they used to. But let me first say, we are fully accredited at, at all schools, which is good. We are accredited with conditions at the middle school, but those scores are improving. That now goes from green, yellow, and red indicators, which I didn't like much, to distinguished on-track, off-track, and needs intensive support, which I also don't like much, but it's what we're, it's the cards that we're dealt with. And you can see, I'm not gonna read that to you, but you can see what those, those are and the amount of points that you need to, to achieve that designation. In a minute, I'm gonna show you what our scores from last spring. The VDOE did a, a report to show us what our scores from last spring would have given us this year if we were under this system. But basically, if you go to the, this was the regional superintendent's training here, and probably the easiest way that I can explain it to you, or you can look at the, the other one, but basically what they're looking for is, there's three different, three different categories, the elementary, middle, and high school. They, they've broken them up, and the focus on elementary is with more so mastery than anything, and you can see they listed that at 65%. So if students score in the advanced range or pass range, that shows that they have mastery of the subject, and that gives us a bunch of points. Then they add those points to the growth that our students get at the elementary level. And growth would mean that if they scored a, let's say they scored a 350 the previous year, and then they scored 400, they passed, they would have growth. And so that would be 25% of that too. And then for the elementary school, chronic absenteeism will count. The readiness counts 10%, but right now they don't have the five Cs. They're still arguing about with the General Assembly, so that, we don't know what to expect with that yet. So we're thinking that chronic absenteeism will be the area of readiness that elementary will follow. Then if you move to the middle school, they change because the importance goes more to readiness, or more importance on readiness, less importance on growth, still an importance on mastery, you can see that. And then at the high school, readiness really becomes a, a fairly big deal there because we are wanting to, our, our students who graduate to be ready for the next step. And actually, I do like the accountability, I don't like the designation, I like this accountability system so much better than the previous accountability system because it actually does take into account what our students are doing as a whole, not just a test score. So they're, they're getting points for something other than just scoring 400 on an SOL. So you can see that, and just to try to run you through an example, and then I'll show you how our, our school, and I'll, this is a briefing, I'll, I'll try to keep you all abreast of, of all this as best I can, as much as I can understand it. And I know Dr. Pulcher and Dr. Grant, we're all involved in trying to understand this. But if you go into that, this copy here, you can see there's an example, and it shows you the weighting for the mastery, the growth, and the readiness. So when you get to, when you get kind of to the end of that, you're going to take on pay, on the page where you calculate overall performance, this page here. So you take the mastery of what a student has, you take the growth that they earned, so the points for the mastery, the points for the growth, and the points for the readiness, you take all those points and you add them up, and you get an index value. And then that index value determines what category you're gonna receive, whether you're distinguished, whether you're on-track, whether you're off-track, or whether you're in, needs immediate improvement, or needs whatever it is.
Intensive support.
Yes, needs intensive support. So looking at last year's scores for our division, we did really, really well. You can see here, can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay. You can see here that everyone except for our virtual school, and we don't have a lot of, you know, we don't have a lot of, we're not teaching those students that stride, working with those students, and that should come up. But you can see that all of our schools, with the exception of Pulaski Middle and the virtual school, would meet on-track and are close to being distinguished. Now, right now, work-based reading, or work-based learning at the high school level is not, the General Assembly hasn't approved that yet, so they're still working to see how that's gonna go. But you can see if that, if that wasn't counted, our score for Pulaski High School would go down a little bit, not much. So we were, we were really, really pleased with how this looked for us, and our, our staff and administrators are really focusing on, for example, at the high school, really focusing on CTE. CTE gives us a real, a lot, the high schools are at an advantage over the middle and elementary because of readiness, that component really factors into CTE with the internships, the apprenticeships, the externships, the high-wage earnings, students taking classes that lead to high-wage earning jobs. Those are all considerations to earn points for that designation. So I can give you more information on this as soon as it becomes clearer, but that is, and again, it's, I think it's a better system than, than what we've had because it does look at the whole child versus just a test score. Does that help at all?
It does. I mean, I was poking around on the Department of Education website here a month ago with this system, trying to make sense of it and how they would, you know, the numbers were calculated, where we would fall into it. If I'm not mistaken, this was just given approval by the federal Department of Education too, right?
Yes, ma'am.
That it's been accepted that Virginia can use this. My question would be, if we were to fall into the off-track or needs intensive support, does that trigger anything from the state to help us?
It sure does. It does, and they haven't, it's not confirmed yet, but what I would envision that being and what I hear is monitoring from the Virginia Department of Education. And then if you go on the last page of that document we just looked at, that shows the federal school identification, that will also factor into the amount of support that we will receive from the Virginia Department of Education and the federal government, if the, if the Department of Education stays the way it currently is
Right.
With new administration coming in. And right now, for this year, Kreiser is a CSI school, and we get a, a lot of money for being a CSI school. Now, they're really working hard to get out of that, and you can see here, if you look, they're at 86.2 on their point system based on last year's scores. So they're doing a really, really fine job, and you have to be, I think you have to be out of that, you have to have two years of being out of that in order to get out of the, completely out of that. And then River Lawn and the middle school are TSI schools. So we are doing some VDOE monitoring and also federal monitoring on those, those three schools there. So that, we're hoping that we can move our students. That's based on, on Title I schools at the elementary level and also based upon, at the middle school, based on the scores that we received on the SOLs from, from last spring, those designations. So Ms. Blevins, Mr. Byers, and Dr. Green all have certain things that they are required to do based upon this designation as a federal TSI or CSI. And they're working with Dr. Pulcher and Dr. Grant to move us forward. Now, the middle school, Kreiser, and River Lawn, unfortunately, if they were to stay in these designations next year based upon this coming spring's scores, you drop down a level. So if you are on-track and you are a TSI school based on federal guidelines, you drop down to off-track. Or if you're off-track and you're a, a TSI school, you drop down to needs intensive support. So we have had a lot of conversations with our staff, our, our administrators, and then they've had this type of, of conversation with the staff. And again, there's a lot, even though the federal government approved this format, there's still a lot that has to be improved as far as readiness goes. There's a lot of questions on the middle school part about advanced courses. A lot of the superintendents are really concerned about having our middle school students take high school courses, so they're working on that. They don't know really how to score or how to evaluate how a student is understanding the five Cs, creativity, critical thinking, collaboration, those things. And at the high school level, there's a lot of discussion about what that federal graduation indicator, why aren't we using the GCI rather than the FGIR, the state graduation indicator rather than the federal graduation? So there's a lot still up in the air. That's a lot in a short period of time.
It is.
I don't, and I'm not an expert on it at all.
Ideally, we just, we don't want to have constant oversight by the state or the Feds all the time.
Correct. Although you, the one thing that...
We want to graduate out of that.
Well, the one thing that's really good about it is you get a, a lot of, what is a, what did Mr. Byers get over, it was over $100,000, right?
He got $2,000, I think Mr. Byers got $100,000. Yeah, so it's, I mean, and we've done some wonderful PD with that. We've sent a team of teachers down to Ron Clark in Atlanta, and most of our schools now are moving to this house system where they assign students to a house, so it becomes more of a, a family. I read an article just yesterday about what keeps teachers, what brings teachers to school divisions, and the first thing is the culture of the school. Our, our folks have done an outstanding job since I've been here of building culture within the schools, particularly at the middle school this year. And that's something that keeps our teachers and Mr. Thomas, I think we, what do we have as far as the intent forms? We had less than 10 folks that were, two, right now, two.
Rob, I hate to be very simplistic about this, but keep, you guys keep doing the good job you're doing. We don't have to worry about the, getting this secret decoder ring to calculate the score. We're gonna be in the, we're gonna be in the goods, on the good foot of this thing.
So our retention rate is looking good.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's what we want.
Very good.
All right. Love to hear. Well, that's a testament to the team you've assembled too.
So that's, wanted to get that to you all as, as we move forward and, and trying to learn about that. And we have, I have a lot of, of opportunities. I'll miss one this Friday when they talk about it at our Superintendent Region meeting, but certainly will get caught up on it.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Mr. Graham. All right. Ms. Morrison, you have something for us tonight?
A very brief something, I promise. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Graham. I'm a one slider. I have one slide for you. We have been contacted by the Y Street Group who hosts the Rev Your Bev campaign. They got in contact with me, and following the contact that I had with them and the presentation that they gave, they asked to meet with the members of the Wellness Committee who were available. We had that meeting on December the 12th. Essentially, the Rev Your Bev campaign increases awareness of healthy hydration and gives resources to school districts who meet their needs to help promote healthy hydration, excuse me, with the student body, staff, teachers, administrators alike. What we need as the first step to come in line with the Rev Your Bev campaign What we need as the first step to come in line with the Rev Your Bev campaign is a simple rewording of part of our current local wellness policy. And you can see that in the one slide. There are very little changes that would be made, basically, again, just some verbiage that would be added and/or slightly changed. And the good news is, this is our wellness policy that they have amended, and we already meet almost all of their needs as far as I am aware. And this would mean that we may have the opportunity to have things like healthy hydration posters to display in the school. It may give us the opportunity to have things like free water bottles, additional free water coolers for the schools to use as they see fit. I bring this to you because it is the local wellness policy. It is an item that has to be given to the public and is currently available to the public. It would need your approval for change.
Okay, and it would require a minor policy change on our side?
Just the local wellness policy, which is already in effect. So basically, that bit of rewording in the beginning that says that we recognize water as an essential nutrient, and of course, we do, and that we promote healthy hydration behaviors. There's some rewording there about water being available before, during, and after the school day, which it already is. And then that we would have water available in high-traffic areas. Our current water fountains meet this need, from my understanding from Rev Your Bev. So this, again, would be a first step. It wouldn't hurt us in any way. It is just a bit of rewording before we go into the next step with them to see what resources they would make available to us and to our student bodies.
Does that require approval tonight, or are we going to action item that for next month?
It can be an action item next month if that works best.
Sounds good.
And of course, if you have any questions that I can't answer, I'm in contact with the liaison very frequently because she checks in to see how I'm doing with this. And I can ask her any questions that you might have.
These are a lot of words to say, drink water.
Right. But it is a battle with the current beverages that are available to everyone.
I mean, we're not offering in any of our schools, like particularly maybe the high school. There's not... Are there soda machines and things of that nature?
No.
Okay.
Absolutely not. That is against...
I know you said that our water fountains met the version of the policy. Do we have bottle filling stations everywhere?
We do. We have bottle filling stations just about everywhere.
Cool. Cool.
Okay. There's a couple of exceptions, but I think Snowball might be one of them that doesn't have one, at least in the cafeteria.
Gotcha.
They have two down by the gym, right near the first.
They have a hand crank pump outside, it's fine.
Get a spigot. Get it out of the spigot.
Well, yeah.
In any case, it's very minor. And again, a first step. If we were to find any step further down the line that we did not agree with, obviously, it would just be resources we don't gain.
Sounds good.
Is that something we could just move to an action item?
That's what I was going to say. Does anybody have any questions tonight or any concerns that wouldn't want you?
I'll make a motion that we move this to an action item tonight.
I'll second.
All right. We'll move it over to our action item to get that policy revision for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jessica.
And just so we don't forget, now that we're moving... Wait, no, calendar items, sorry.
Just real quick, tomorrow's two hours late. Monday is the holiday for Martin Luther King Day. I think you and Sabrina, Madam Chair, are going to the VSBA Capitol Conference. Thank you for doing that. I just can't make it there that day. And then the January 29th is a three-hour early release.
All right.
The first action item is, you know, we had with Ms. Galar and Mr. Whitaker, we had the Russ Grant, which we have, and we have the money and the award now, so we need to get the money released. So we have part of that as the resolution and some documents that Morgan has worked to send to the... Back to the organization tomorrow, and then they'll do a release of funds to us once they review those.
Do you need us to take action on this?
You have to approve the resolution.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this resolution?
Do not.
Do we have a motion that we will approve the resolution?
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mrs. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Thank you all. Dr. Polchuk is going to talk to you about just a change that we have, trying to work with an employee and also keep what we need here in the school division as far as speech goes.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Graham, we discussed this last... Not January?
No.
But maybe before. We have an SLP who has an opportunity to take a position with a private company and make things better for her family. It's a good opportunity for her. What she has requested is to go part-time and that she will help us through the end of the year by covering part-time. And there was a proposal originally that she would cover, I believe it was like the out-of-district placements, MINEC, things like that, and the pre-Ks, and some of the things that were more difficult, like the high school and the middle school, as far as logistically for the SLPs, them having to leave. The SLPs have met, and they have a different proposal. They offered two. One involved them each taking a day at Kreiser and taking some of it, the evening shift, basically. And then they also have suggested hiring a SLPA, which is a paraprofessional for SLPs who can provide services. I haven't really given them an answer on either one. I would recommend that we accept Ms. White's offer to work part-time, and then we can work with the SLPs to find what works the best for both them and for the division. If we choose to accept Ms. White's proposal, we're saving roughly twenty... Twenty-three to twenty-six thousand for the remainder of the school year that would be put away and could be used to either outsource or bring someone in part-time if we chose to do that.
And we can post that position as soon as if you all do approve that.
That is the bigger benefit here, is that by doing it this way, it allows me to go ahead and start looking for the SLP now. They are very difficult to find. Most divisions in our area are having to use telehealth or teletherapy. If we can start doing this now, I can start recruiting and looking at the job fairs that we're getting ready to go into. Next one is January 25th.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions.
Let's go ahead and approve this from Dr. Polchuk, who have a motion that we sign off on this arrangement.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. The next one is the VSBA Business Honor Roll, where we would like to highlight those businesses that mean and partner with us so well. New River, we have New River Community College, the Pulaski County Sheriff's Department, and New River Valley Community Services.
Well, they are absolutely worthy of the recognition.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Graham about this?
Nope.
All right. We have a motion that we approve the resolution honoring these businesses.
I'll make that motion.
I'll stop her.
I will second.
Ms. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox? Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, we have the spring semester field trips. I'm sure we'll have more, but this is the initial... The initial one so far that you see, and Dr. Webb does a really good job of getting these together.
Yeah, I did have a chance to go through. Some of these sound like a lot of fun.
Yes.
Really, some of these are great. Does anybody have any questions regarding any of these field trip requests? Can I have a motion that we approve the spring semester field trips as presented?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Ms. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox? Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you. And then the last one before we do the wellness, the proclamation for NRV reset. And I apologize that this came in last minute. I'd forgotten about it over the holidays, but we do want to get this out to the New River Valley School divisions and have their superintendents sign off on it. It does not... This is not any money coming from Pulaski County. It's just our efforts to try to get Delegate Ballard, Delegate Arnold, and Senator Hackworth a document that they can take to the General Assembly to ask for money for us to potentially build this here in Pulaski at Camp One alongside of what New River Valley Community Services is doing with their crisis stabilization and thirty-sixty, ninety-day facility, too. I don't know if it'll happen, but we're going to try.
Sure.
Well, and it would be something, too, you mentioned Sabrina and I going to the legislative conference.
Yes.
We're going to be certainly knocking on the doors of committee chairs with regard to those who handle the money for education. And to be able to have this in hand would help us to start a conversation with them.
Yeah, we actually have an appointment with Delegate Russell, who's chairman of the Education Committee, one day at a certain time that I will know before we go. But we do have that, Brenda. Schedule that for us, and we'll look forward to chatting.
We had an advisory committee meeting with University of Virginia, and many superintendents last week were presented this idea, too, and it went over very well. And now VAS is on board, too, Virginia Association of School Superintendents, the folks from University of Virginia. To have a regional type of facility for this in all of our regions is desperately needed.
Yeah, and I think showing... The show of solidarity when we go talk to Russell, Delegate Russell, will be a good thing to have. So whatever you can give us to take is good.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Graham, I have a question. When you take state money like that, does it fall under any kind of... It'll still be maintained by the five schools in the district? The state doesn't have any authority over that, or how does that work?
Well, what we're... So there are some... Mr. Williams, there are some opportunities out there for therapeutic day treatment, but they aren't run by... They aren't seen as a school by the Virginia Department of Education. What we're asking for this is it to be seen as an accredited school through the Virginia Department of Education, which is... Would be one of the first in Virginia. And it would allow us to staff it appropriately while then bringing New River Community Service Councilors into us rather than us going to a program like... What's that one called in Christiansburg? Youth Resili...
Youth... Or YRC.
YRC, where we have to actually take homebound teachers and take them over there with us.
So it's basically, it's a standalone school within itself. It has its own budget, its own...
It has its own school... Has a regional school number. It would have its regional school number.
So it would not be associated with classed high schools at all?
It would be. It would be. So our students would... That needed that therapy and support would go there with the intent of...
So we would maintain all the data and reporting?
Everything, yes. And will it be... It would be a regional effort between... And all superintendents are on board. We just need to get their boards on board.
Would we pay... Would like Pulaski County pay for that student going to this school? Kind of similar, we do now, but it's closed.
It's very similar. It'd be a very similar approach to the Southwest Virginia Governor's.
We're paying ourselves back, basically.
Yes. Yeah, we would get the ADM and use some of the ADM to pay for that. Now, we... There will be some cost, but I would expect it to be minimal for the school systems.
Okay, thank you.
Could I explain the benefit of the cost to the...
Sure.
The benefit of the cost to the county is currently the Children's Services Act and the county planning and managing team helps fund the placements that we send for students that may be in out-of-district placement specifically for sped students. If you look at that number right now, it's about one point five million. We have thirty-one students that are currently outplaced, twenty-nine of those being sped. This would give an opportunity for us to have something that is in the county, doesn't cost us as much to transport out, and then the Children's Services Act does not pay for it. It would come through our regular budgetary allotments, and it's not nearly as expensive. So it keeps kids at home, keeps them closer to us, gives them more mental health opportunities, but then it also saves the county as a whole, not necessarily the school system, because those funds for those students that are outsourced are coming from the county, not from the school system. But it saves money on that end through Children's Services Act and through the CPT.
It's a day school.
Very much so.
Okay.
There would be components that New River Valley Community Services would run that are different, but our part would be like a parent's school or the governor's school.
Right now, we have to send students that are in need of services like this or have to be TDO'd. There's no beds anywhere. They sometimes have to go as far as Norfolk or Kentucky, or this would allow... And I would imagine if we were able to get the money to build it, it would fill up very quickly, but it would allow parents to... Part of the problem when you send a child to Norfolk is you don't have that parental engagement that's needed to help the child. And if we had it in our backyard, you know, Floyd, Radford, Montgomery, Pulaski, Giles, parents could go and could also participate in the therapy sessions as well, and I think that's a win.
Yeah. Do they house in Norfolk? That's not a day trip thing, is it?
That's a... That would be a residential placement. These... Our goal here would be to start the child in the NRV reset with the intent they go daily and go back home and hopefully get the therapeutic. But if it becomes escalated, then they don't have to go somewhere. They go to the Crisis Stabilization Center that NRVCS has, or maybe if it gets worse, to the thirty-sixty, ninety-day treatment center.
Mr. Williams, just from personal, and the folks that work with me know that this was a struggle that we had, and my daughter struggled with sending her home things. And so they wanted to send her to Norfolk, and it was for three to fourteen days. There's no idea, and Norfolk is the only bed open. You've been waiting for seventy-two hours for something. You're in a hospital situation in a room that they use for inmates because it's the room that is the safest for the child or for the family member. And then they tell you, you're going to send your child to Norfolk. And you can't have anything. You can't go with them. They took an ambulance. So this offers some relief for the grandchildren. But it's to Rob's point, you know, we're giving an option that is home and allows the parent to be there and participate. There is an adult learning of this that's already in Radford that NRVCS runs. And again, from the personal standpoint, that was the most effective placement that my child went to. It was home. It was something that we could participate in. It was something where she had access to the community, and it truly was the most successful placement. She was placed in Radford. This is a model that I can tell you as a parent, as a family member, is highly effective and is extremely valuable, and I'm very passionate about it. And I...
Well, I wonder how come it's taking so long for it gets something on our end of state?
That is a great question, and...
Probably money.
I would assume that it's... And, you know, sometime at this end, in the end of the state, we don't... We're not as... What is it? The squeaky wheel gets the oil. I don't think we're squeaky enough.
Well, we are going to be at the end of this month. You're sending two squeaky people.
The two squeaks you're sending us.
We need...
The squeaky's are on their way to Richmond.
Well, and my understanding is, I mean, NRVCS, they have the funding. They're going to be able to proceed and build out the Crisis Stabilization Center for minors. gonna be able to proceed and build out the Crisis Stabilization Center for minors. I mean, this is something we don't have. We're looking to put this together with other school divisions to come along with the educational component, to continue their education.
That's right. In a, in an alternative setting where there's, you know, the ratio of student to teacher is, is less, they actually don't have to have a homebound teacher. The teachers will be there, so there'll be better interaction, better relationships, better positive interactions, too. I think it, it just, you know, it's about estimated at a $15 million build, but that's what we're looking for from the state. And I, I know that, you know, several of the delegates have said, you know, we get asked a lot for money, but this is a really good use for the, the amount of, of reserves that-
Oh, yes. They've got a, they've got a lot of cushion-
They do.
In Richmond. We gotta get them to let loose of some of it. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions concerning this resolution? Can I have a motion that we approve the resolution as written?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes. Thank you. I'll, I'll send that out to the other superintendents tomorrow, and hopefully they can get their boards to sign it. Angie from Senator Hackworth's office said that we could get that to them sometime by middle February, that they'll, they'll take care of, they'll try.
Yeah.
So hopefully they will. So, and then you have the wellness.
Yes, the, the action item, we're moving it on to change, make changes to the policy for Ms. Morrison.
Water, water.
Water. Tell them to drink more water.
Akwadash two oh. It's all the same, same guy, same guy.
It would be the changes to, uh, poli-, you know, the policy reference. Yeah, school policy. Can I have a motion that we approve that change?
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Ms. Porter?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Oh, yes.
Guys, it's getting too late, guys. We gotta get out of here. Someone get her water.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Future agenda items. Does anyone on this board here have anything that they'd like?
Not an agenda item, but was contacted by a couple of parents. The one talked about 4H, and they were concerned that they're not seeing 4H in our schools anymore. So I thought I'd just bring that up and see if there's something on our end or their end that has, there's been a breakdown in communication that we can-
That's the first I've heard about that.
I, too, received a, a call and a message from a family very active in the 4H program stating that it was non-existent in the middle school this past fall, and their daughter didn't get to participate in the dramatic reading. And they were told this board exceded, and it was gonna be reinstated in January. But I told her I had, I thought we had a very robust 4H program, and that it was incred-
I thought that was one of those things that dissolved during the COVID restrictions.
No, we, we still, we still have it. And Dr. Graham, who's at a conference right now, but I went, I was a part of the, it's a great event over at, over at Central where they, the whole eighth grade comes in and, and they do a-
It's a reality day.
Reality day.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Lipton does a great job with 4H.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, we're, we're, and he, we email each other at least two or three times a week.
It might be just a breakdown of communication, something there.
I think it is. I think it is. Maybe that's it. Yeah, he's, he's, we still maintain contact with him all the time, and he does wonderful things for us, too.
I was shocked, too, saying, oh, hey.
Yeah, he was, yeah.
And the only, the only other thing I would have is the town manager, Todd Day, reached out to me stating that where he was at previously in Tazewell, their local government liked to recognize excellence and achievement in the school systems. He did forward me an email kind of outlining some of the parameters of that idea.
Okay.
I forwarded it to the board members, and I've heard from Gina, but not the others. And I only bring it up because Mr. Day messaged me again yesterday asking me if we had discussed that. And I told him I would bring it back up, and we had the holidays and all the things, and everybody's mind was somewhere else. So I can't remember if I forwarded it to you, Mr. Graham, or not. I kind of just was following protocol.
You probably did.
No, no, no. I was probably following protocol and sent it to Josh and-
That might be my fault. It was caught in the, in the Christmas time emails, man.
I was just following protocol and sent it to Josh and Gina, I think. I may not have even sent it to the other board members, and I just heard from Gina. So I just, I mean, I think anytime we can recognize excellence in our school system, even at the local government level, it's not a bad thing. And he seems very eager to do that. So if we could, I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Does he, does he want to do that at, at one of their?
Yes. Yes. Have, yeah, the student, family, teacher, whatever it might be, to a town council meeting, present a resolution. He even sent me a copy sample resolution from his time at Tazewell. So-
We have, uh, the, the student representative for the Board of Supervisors that, that makes a report. So we could, we could look at doing something like that, or-
I think it's more specific to recognizing our students that maybe you have received honor, some, some sort of exceptional, but they're residents of the town of Pulaski.
Oh, okay.
So he would be doing this on behalf of the town of Pulaski's board-
Gotcha.
And at their meetings. And that's the way I understood it. And like I said, anytime, you know, another board would like to recognize our students, I gather the only thing they might need from us would be helping to facilitate the student chosen for recognition.
Sure.
You know, if we needed to communicate information, you're gonna be honored at this meeting of the town council.
Yeah, and that's what I expressed to him upon my just first thoughts were, okay, how, how is the flow of communication gonna go from us to you? You know, who's your point person? Who's gonna be our point person? He's like, well, the, the representative for the town where I was at before just let me know. I was like, well, we're not doing that because there's a lot that falls through the cracks that way. The last thing we want to do is recognize one and not another, and it'd be very contentious.
Well, we love celebrations.
My, my concern was making sure we didn't leave anyone out, and the second one was the flow of communication. That's all I mentioned to him. So I'll send it-
Where do they hold their meetings?
Mondays. Last, second Mondays of the month.
Second Mondays.
They meet twice a month.
First, first and third?
First and third. Tuesdays. They meet twice a month, but there's some talk, they might go to a once a month meeting format, no?
And we wouldn't have to go to those meetings. We would just need to provide the information, and then they would invite the family or whatever. They would do their own thing. But I'll forward it to you tomorrow and to the other board members as well. And he's welcome, he said he'd be happy to come speak, too, so.
Sure. Yeah.
But that's the only thing I wanted to refresh everyone on.
A little presentation for us.
I think I'll see him, too, at a chamber meeting here coming up.
Please tell him I mentioned it.
Okay, will.
Anything else we'd like to see in the future? All right. We come to the last public comment, portion of our meeting. If there's anybody else who's been waiting to speak that has been so patient, this is now your chance to come to the podium. Give us your grievances.
Looks like Mr. Thomas is itching to speak. He's, he's been quiet for way too long.
All right. If there's no one else wanting to speak, this meeting is adjourned.